All right, are we done? I don't think you should be home. I'm not sure if you see this. They want to give us 20 years. Aroka. DC additional family in one million dollars please. Any years up in here? Any years up in here? Anyone? Give me total, give me total, let's see what we're working with. Let's see the figure. It's a transparent government, many people here in the house see the people who are at risk. So far, so that we can see if we are beating Sydney, Brisbane, Melbourne, Adelaide, even not our territory, if we are beating the hazard. Uncle Marco, are they on site? Look at them.
I'll hold this. Hold this one second.
I don't think the sheep are counted, but eh, they want, they can play their brother, they want to give us more. Okay. Now collect us from this money. All right, ladies and gentlemen, can you put it total together for us? Let's see what we're working with. Uh huh, you call me. You just say you not call me. Okay, okay, I just say you call me, sir. What are we working with? Give me figure, what are we working with?
Yeah, we need to focus.
Quick, 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 we need to run up so that eh, we move on. Let's see what we're working with. If Pet, if we beat Sydney, because they think we could not do it, they said Pet, no, they not get action. Just one second, we're just putting our figures together, and then we see what we left with.
It's seven with 22 viewers, now it's 100.
All right, thank you so much, everyone. We still waiting for, it's like election, we are waiting for results. In the meantime, while we are waiting for the figures to come out and see what we raised today, and see what we eh, what we left with. Eh, we are gonna be having lunch, I mean not lunch, late lunch. People don't want to listen to, hear the question he's asking me. If you show what I don't, don't listen to people eh. So whatever, I know you are president to be. Your followers, the way they do things sometimes, you don't need to hear. If you hear the question he's asking me, you will not ask me to take you back to your hotel again. Okay, I'm ready, I'm coming back to you, sir. Okay, what we figure are we working with? All right, ladies and gentlemen, we eh, we have raised 6,180 dollars. Right now, 6,180 dollars. What is left of 10K? Three, three what? 3,820. Hmm, you're not too far. You suppose more than that? Yes. All right. The real figure that has been contributed. All right, all my tax people, can I just eh, make connection with this boy again? And I raise broad mind. I think these figures eh,
Let me go and help.
It should be more than that.
You need to keep an eye on it.
It should be more than that, people said it should be more than that. Unless we are missing, we are missing some people, it should be more than that. Yeah, we've got accountant working on the matter. Uh huh, we are coming eh, now I want to ask you, answer your question. So already listen to. Eh, they still working with the figures eh, my accountant is there and I can see everybody putting hands together. Okay, what was your question again, sir?
The, the question is for you, not for the audience, and I don't ask you. You know.
Maybe you get the question. Transparency government, ask me.
The question are for you, not for the audience.
Ask question, not the one that come here now, you come say I forget, ask you question oh. I'm giving you the last chance to ask me the question oh, my dog, ask me.
I don't ask you now.
They say how much we save to donate. Oh my, Nigeria on the hasho. What's the figure? Okay. That is looking very good, put your hands together, everyone. I believe in my eh, my team, we have just raised 7,430 dollars, right? 7,430 dollars. Put your hands together, pet people! You eh, you know, if something is more than awesome, you call it awesome. You are all awesome. I cannot thank you enough. My bro, thank you for your job well done. The thing verse you, now you battle, now you get off. No, the way you say, perhaps you are not doing your job very well, you are too, I can see, you too mild, this boy need chili, hot chili. Thank you very much, my honor, I would hope my president to be. Don't worry, get the hotel, connect. Transparency. Is it, come on, where would the today stakeholders, now not there, there oh. Stakeholders, action! You defeat me. All right. See doctor, he make a balance in many one. Bois, sir. Boi, the issue this year oh. He according me, he the way, if he deal my one shit, he go there, you know what they are doing. He according me, move here, this way, I tell my brother. That one when my daughter, then they press 20, 20 dollars. Now me and I was a car today. I would say, my daughter, you don't you, you don't you look at my eye, when I blink you, you blink back. When we're growing up, our parents will look at you, don't eat, your mama will tell you, don't eat, look at my eye. And your mama, now they fed test the food. He said, he hungry, because he don't look my eye. I took my daughter eye the other day. Somebody offer food, my daughter was looking. I blinking, it where eh. Next thing, start eating, when we go to the car, say, he said daddy, what, something fell inside your eye, why were, why were you blinking your eye? She the only the boy for abroad. And I worry. We are down with that more 2,000. We got 7,430, so how much are we down with? 2,000 what? 570. That's not too bad. That is not bad. I'm gonna raise that money from four people right now in the house. Just four people before we have refreshment, four people volunteer to raise that money for me, please. We want to beat Sydney record, please. We wanna beat Brisbane record. They think we cannot do it, that was when somebody posted on my wall, my guy forget how you to raise that kind money? For pet? How? But we want to tell them, we can do it. I need four people, please. I'm not a pastor. If I was a pastor, I would say, yeah, wait, that coin is on the way. That's what they tell the carrier, it's come out eh. There was someone say, you see, you get only 11, you come out. I'm not a pastor, but I'm standing in front of you, please, I'm begging you. Raise that money for us. I need four people to stand up and balance that money for us, please. I need four more people, yes, one, stand up for me, please, my brother. Put your hands together, put your hands together for this man. What are you giving us?
Just to talk, just a sum of 200 dollars.
200 dollars, thank you, what's your name, sir? Yemola, Ademola, get his contact. 200 dollars, so, we are going now, please, I need three, if I, let me bump it up again, another four. I still need three, three, four people, you can do it, please. Come on, guys, do it for us, do it for this movement, please. We need to have refreshment, our ladies need to dance for us, they need to welcome, so worry.
Thank you. Eh, we African. I came later to make it up. As African, I'm sorry for that. I want to hear Shorore's voice. Eh, that's why I'm here. Eh, another place that I will give 200 dollars, but I still want to hear him this, but, and what is up? That's why I'm here.
What's your name, sir?
I am British, Hillary, yeah, I don't need to speak English, I'm an Igbo man. Thank you, Hillary.
Uche, Uche Hillarys. Oye Buka, Igbo Igbo, now get correctly. Bring them up, come, come me to Hillarys, 200 dollars. You hear so whatever, you know, they since now, you did Facebook, you can all hear the voice of Facebook now. You are Igbo man, you are getting the mortgage, they not good man. You answer more question, 200 dollars, please. As you call me, Oye Buka, let's see no fine, you done.
Brother, I made it to pay fine. But at same time, I know there's no fine already in the table. I, I should start it, I will pay fine, 20 dollars, start.
Thank you very much, Dr. Vala, from Valola. That's signs where you read, where you tell us yesterday. It's working. Signs of catching some people. It's what I calling, put 20 dollars to the cost, please. What are we looking at, how much is left? Give me, give me, give me, give me. We need to do it before we have refreshment and the ladies want to dance. Oh my god, look at that, we only need 1,050 dollars left. Philani. 100 dollars from Philani, please. 100 dollars from Philani, who is? Oh, yes, Mr. Rio, my friend.
On behalf of me and my brother, 200.
Oh! His stage name is Mr. Rio, he, I guess the data. This man is a potential young, talented businessman. He was so much they have on, 200 dollars, one I recognize now. 200 dollars from Mr. Rio. Who are, we are not far from it, meeting our target, minimum, we are not far from it. How much have we got left, Mr. Marco? How much have we got left? We're not far from it, please. Okay eh, my, no, my dad eh, my dad say my husband has done his part. My dad, do your own selfie. Eh, you don't do eh, eh, you don't do, my dad, no, I like. We don't want make go to the house, oh guys, wait till they happen now. Eh, we live on that, oh guys, not try. How, how much are we down with, please, what's left? We need 750, oh my lord, we are not far from it. 750 dollars. Where you, oh guys? You not caught today? You did high table. You did high table. I beg, go sit down for where you sit down, sir. I beg, I beg, I, we'll call you back oh. Come, come, I see you, not be the one, you take my back, say, I didn't see, I didn't, I beg, where you, oh guys? I said, he should call you yesterday, he say he go walk, he say you come. Eh eh, lawyer, doctor, what do you mean? Doctor, I beg eh, on behalf of, I did eh, I can be adding you. I still remember that. Addesino! Please, I will make the announcement on behalf of now. I am capable of making the announcement, if you don't want make, if, on behalf of Addesino family, they have raised, donated 250 dollars for us, please. Because if she didn't do, do that, I know what to do to the husband. He tell you what he do for his Amaya's now. This my, the husband was in the Maya's, he was size the shoe. I read there, I said, wait no, sir. My doctor, you don't hear, the shoe show later in head. He know answer, he ask, what I will do this guy? I said, doctor, me oh. He be, he also this doctor, say, no, no, blame on now. On that took him walk. So, when I come and go back, so the team, I think the team, but you not leave for office. I said, doctor, I tell you, for where, no, I don't, I don't carry one. He call, he remove the main shoe that I wore, that he brought, he was size it new one, so I just collected the, the old one, I took it and walk away. His Amaya's, so I hid behind one pillar with one agent, I said, please don't tell him. The worst part of it, he didn't, in fact, he didn't want that shoe, now he wanted the old shoe, old shoe, not today eh. Come and see my doctor now for his Amaya's. As in, in fact, I told Mr. Addesino to stop in his, his Amaya's. I was hardly looking at him. He was looking for his first, because they had to call, somebody had to go to the bathroom and see if they mistakenly pack it away to the store room. Now only somebody called him, say, oh my god, that camera, they look you oh. Better free this man oh. I suppose I saw that, you know, say this law, yeah, you been at, the law come pass on you. This man will deny me, because Peter deny Jesus Christ. Three times, now say, I call me, say, doctor, see your shoe. You don't look at me from head to toe. He said, God, what I will do with this boy? Yes, sir, so I'm very glad we did that, 250. Who is, how much have we got left now? 500, okay, who else is calling us here? Wait till you now see my body now eh.
Madam?
Oh! If I say you call, give this job for me eh. The way I see my guy, and this team madam eh, they attention eh. Oh, but get ready, person, they carry my, they go. You know, see we are this oh. Another person will slap in my mouth with the answer, probably. Who slap my son in Australia? Eh, he go free to pay for me. No, they will not do that to me, mommy. Eh, mommy say we have it there, she's gonna do it, and at same time, he promise us that. No problem, we still have 500 dollars, does that mean we conclude the 500 dollars you have done it? So, okay, close, that fine. Eh, both women, not be fat, I go, okay, we are done with her many. Eh, help us. I know, they say we never compete, we never interest me. Uh huh, eh, won't compete eh.
All right, instead of going on and on and off, let's have the GoFundMe address, I need the more I got to need, so we can close the contribution.
Okay. Okay? 500 eh. What is name that? Uh huh, you know, they say, continue to, you see what they have on your back. Okay. Eh, all right. Guys, make some noise! I want to use opportunity to just say, I can't go on my knees. AAC? AAC? When I when they say action. AAC? Take it back! AAC? Take it back! Who say we are not too much? They fat die. Go punish devil. Somebody say raise hand, it will be 10,500 dollars. Okay, Chi, I say you raise hand eh. Maybe you cook back for us. You try. All right, now the ladies, ladies want to dance, look eh. Please, now that we have pledged, we have a timeframe to redeem this pledge, please. If you can, please, be able to redeem this pledge, it's for us, by tonight or fairlyly tomorrow afternoon. Is that all right? For people to, is that okay? All right. Shorore, normally, wherever, wherever he goes, he is a man of his word, he's very transparent. He never fails to tell the rest of the world, his fans, where he has been and what he done for him, you know what I mean? So, we are very, very happy to see somebody like this. Please, before tomorrow, he is gonna be leaving on Tuesday, right? On Tuesday, he leaves. He wants to be able to, be able to thank the rest of the world for this, okay? And because he can see a beer in the can and make, you know, some of his eh, his equation. Please, endeavor to, please, make this pledges redeemable by latest tomorrow afternoon. And as you do this for us, for this movement, you know you have done something for yourself, for your future, and the future of your kids. And for those loved ones, you live back home. Those people who are still in the struggles, this is our country, we must reclaim it back, and it's a struggle for us. May God continue to bless you abundantly. God continue to replenish your pocket. And I'm gonna be letting eh, Shorore do the last, by end of the program. I will now have to call on the ladies, are they ready? The ladies want to dance, Shorore, I don't know if you got this one when you went to Sydney. You see, we are small but mighty oh. They say we far from the rest of the world, my brother, we do amazing things here. I don't think wherever you went, they dance for you, whatever, we got beautiful women in the house to entertain you, to show you appreciation and your love. Put your hands together as we welcome the women, are they ready? Okay, are you guys ready? Okay, they ready, put your hands together, get entertained. This is about, for everything, and about doing all whatever Shorore will. Shorore wants to do for us, but it's also about entertainment. We're here to be entertained. All right, I pass on the microphone to Ogechi, she's ready. All right, they are ready. And once we get entertained, and we have a refreshment, and the last phase of the questioning, and we're done. Nasso! Nasso, for the chicken. All the taking back, we made the house. Nasso! Taki di baba. Eh, we can't think, eh, taki di baba. Nasso! That's it. Please, refreshment time. Don't go away, please. We have refreshment after the dance, and we finish up with the last, the final. So, start! All right, all right. All right, all right. Thank you very much. Thank you very, very much, women, thank you, thank you, ladies. We appreciate that. Now we, put your hands together for the ladies. Eh, Aginos? 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 Aginos, say, a family don't drop the salad. I think one of the eh, yes. All right, all right, we are on the competing phase. How many of us have got the cards for question? How many of us have got the cards for question? Can we reassemble ourselves and sit down now? And we start again with questioning. Can we sit down and finish up with the last set of questioning? All right, shall we sit down and finish up? And one more thing, can we all sit down now, please? All the ladies inside, can you outside, can you come inside, please? We want to finish off with the last round of questioning, please. Can we take our seat? Hillarys will now here, officially here, Shorore's voice now. Give me the card, the queens want to ask question, all right? We make sure we provide card for the kids. All right, we're not gonna keep it too long. Come my sit down now, take your position back. Thank you for the donation. Eh, take it back. All right, please, you know, the account is still there, it doesn't mean that when you finish one set or other seat, it's an ongoing thing, please, you know, Shorore is still on this race. It's an ongoing thing, so you got the account, put in something eh, your name will be there, so there's permission for that. Who's got card number nine? Card number nine, Tosin, right? You okay? Oh. Oh. Now this is second round. That's the second round.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tosin Oney. And you actually started on the good news, because I can remember during your introductory speech, you were mentioning Australia being the end of the world, and my very intelligent wife actually said, no, the beginning of the world, and I'm glad we collected that. Eh, I got to know about you, Mr. Asho, you were about nine years ago, because I consider myself a student of politics, so to say. And eh, I was falling up on the help of eh, the dead president Maru Sahaara. Other things I've met couldn't give information about his head, stated. It was shrouded in secrecy then, but you will turn out informations about him. And I can remember reading in eh, the dead eh, special presentation on eh, his spokesman eh, Olusegun Wadeni, he, that even information that he did not get, he was getting on Sahara for that, and that they were kind of like shielding the way of information, and they were still getting information. So, like, that portrays the part that your struggles generate, so, and we deeply appreciate you for that and for your courage. Eh, like, eh, I believe so much of the eh, issue of restructuring, and through restructuring, it starts from leadership restructuring. So, the same set of arms that have been holding us now, we want them out. But, you are, especially in your humble self, I believe you will stand very well that eh, eh, you are coming up against political edgemen, and these are not guys that not, that just eh, give power or surrender power easily. So eh, my question is that, how do you plan to take them on once? And if by challenge, anyway, because you have, that would give a great upset, if we're able to handle that. Because a lot of, I'm actually begging, I lose more time. A lot of eh, eh, effort have been made, you know. Probably the greatest one before you have been was that of eh, the late Ghanim Power. And eh, a lot of them just came out. Hope rises, and before you know it, everything gives you that. So what are your plans to sustain? Because, and that's the example I saw in Sahara for that, and I'm very impressed with the way Sahara in for that have been, you know, growing. Because it's also, it didn't come to Shorore's campaign too, no. It's kept on that, if you, so, you do something bigger than yourself. So do you plan to make this thing back, make something that's bigger than yourself? You know, that even, if tomorrow is an occasion for, even if you are unable to shatter the eh, glass city, so to say, definitely you represent a force that will give it the greatest crack. So how do you intend to, you know, take on these eh, political, eh, tyranny and politics, other well-intended leaders that are also wanting to make a difference in India, thank you, I can't thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, eh, number 10, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Shorore. My name is Ibrahim, and eh, my question, I just have three questions. The first one is eh, when do you decide to, for this circumstance, what makes you to decide on becoming the president of Nigeria? And the second thing, it has to do with what my brother said earlier eh. I would be frank eh, as we all know eh, PDP, ATC, they are very strong in Nigeria. And it should not be easy for you to just go in there, or for us to just go in there now. Let's assume, it doesn't work, as eh, God says, this is not the time, it's not time yet. What is the plan going forward? Will this be just one shot or no? Are we going to have something recurring? Because yeah, I, I would, I would not like to just come in and support something that will just rise up my hope and just die now. So, and the third one, the last question one of my brother asked, how will you eh, support yourself with people of the same idea? Because you are here to touch it. We believe in Boi, that Boi will do the right thing, but, well, let's say he has a very good intention, but, the people that surrounded him are not good. What's your plan on getting that done? Thank you. Thank you
Number one, please Good evening Um, I did, yeah, I did I thought my name would be Adishitong, I didn't relay by now You understand, your lover But because of all we've said, and we know why Nigeria, that's why I'm still talking to you, Australia Um, I think a few things I need to tell you Anybody telling you you're young, please forget it I think Macron was thirty-nine when he became president Obama was, what, forty-seven and a couple of months? And Tony Blair was only forty-three when he started in Britain He retired at fifty-seven, I think, so don't worry, you're not young Bringing it back to what it is, though The issue is this, see, all of us are speaking here now, we're speaking big grammar We cannot participate in this election What exactly, and my friend was going to also check with that What exactly are you going to do about making sure? If we're contributing hundred thousand, hundred billion to the economy And we can't do, I don't know what we're to do this, but not supposed to do that We can't do anything about it, we're just speaking English How are you going to go about this? Now, people are saying, "Oh, Sowore" And I think this is the time to actually do this, and I agree with you totally If the two options we have is dying president And maybe you are an American, I still don't understand why America would not Put Atiku in prison or challenge him or Like they do, hijack him with what they've said they've done If you know, can you please explain to us? I think this is the time to do it And how do you exactly want to take on this establishment? Thanks Number two, please Five questions Five
Hi, my name is Tibi I'm also from Ondo State Well, my question goes dark I studied economics and, um... Really, whatever you want to do as a politician or whatever You must know all about economics, you know what I mean? That means your economy too must be well, must be sound In order to perform well Now my question is What are those things, what are those economic policy? You want to execute when you get to power? You understand various economic policy? Policy? What economic policy are you intending carrying out when you get there? And the second question is this When you started, uh, your speech here I went, uh, online And one of my friend commented and said, back home, he said "Oh, we love him" In fact, we want him to be the president, but to be candid, he can't get there And I asked him instantly, "Why did you say he can't get there?" He said, "The political environment do not allow him get there" Now, the question is How did you want to face that challenge when you get back home? Because it is very easy, you coming here and telling us you want to do this, you want to do this Back home, ninety percent of us is not going to vote for you to be candidate You have to make sure that you put your house in place when you get back home And that is the main place where your main political stock should be centered on That is from my own side, thank you
Number three, please
I greet everybody here Um, my whole question will not be too much But I want the president to be to actually lay more emphasis on it Uh, initially, I would like to appreciate Mr. Sowore for his, uh, movement Because now all Nigerians now, we are, we learn, realize that You don't need to have like a twenty years experience or fifty years experience To be a Nigerian president Which Mr. Sowore has laid a good foundation But my question is, what is your economic plans to make, to move Nigeria forward? I mean, the minister Because as you are here today, I expect you to come properly Someone who will present to us as, "This is the Minister of Information" "This is the Minister of Health" Is it going to be Dr. Damage that is going to be the Minister of Health? Or the other lady who is going to be the Information Minister? And that's number one On the issue of security Without Nigeria being in a secure country, there is no achievement Because whatsoever you build can be destroyed within a high plane That's another question Uh, the last question is, uh... This is a race Is either you win or you lose What about if you lose this election in 2019? Is this going to be the end of this, your plan? Thank you
Number four
Good evening, my president Uh, my, my question has been, I have two questions One of them has been partly answered, um, about the grassroots in the north We have a country that has about Not less than sixty percent of the votes coming from the north And then let us assume that we are in the north now, that sixty percent is coming from The sixty percent of the votes are not coming from the cities or the capitals They are not coming from Tutsi, they are not coming from Kano City, they are not coming from Katina City They are coming from the itinerant That settlement sixty kilometers from the closest major road I was a, a presiding officer, that was my experience In the north, in Yobe State Sixty kilometers on the sand, desert Yet, if you see the mass number of people coming to vote There are more than the Lagos ward on my street How? Apart from radio and all of that, considering the fact that These guys, I call them zombie votes The Bulama, the village head just tells them, "This is who we are voting" Zubba or Zubay or whatever, they take top print on this particular thing And that is exactly what they are going to do This is where the votes comes from What is my president's strategy? To do, undo? That's this very pedestrian of a practice that operates in the north And then my second question is this, my questions are electoral Because my president, I wanted to be there So the second question is this When the election starts What is my president's strategy? To prepare para venture? Para venture we do not imagine as forced in the election God forbid When we go to tribunal How do we gather the evidences during the election? How do we, who are our representatives in the wards? In the polling units? What is our instruction to them to gather the evidence that we use to go to tribunal for our victory? If we are not advanced as winner at first, thanks, thank you, my president
Thank you And we'll draw on, uh, number five Time
Six line up Hello, good evening, my name is Nisa Almati And I, um, I'm just wondering, first of all With regards to, um, to the government, will we speak? A lot of the countries in the western hemisphere are really into securing the borders and maintaining national sovereignty So I would like to know what are your policy positions in regards to maintaining Nigeria's national sovereignty? First of all, establishing one, and then maintaining one, in terms of immigration So I want to know what are your immigration policies and look like? Today attract foreign, um, foreign, uh... Foreigners and foreign investment, foreign money, and also Not circumvent local, uh, businesses as well And also, uh, my other question is with regards to China And how they are so much into investing Africa at the moment What are your plan, your policy in place at the moment? That that whole system is regu- regulated and at least it opens the transfer And the time? With regards to the, um, international, um... International, uh... International relationships with Swans, UK, other countries as well A lot of our image internationally has been damaged by the four and nine Or, uh, people So I want to know what you're going to do in terms of your policy positions To strengthen and recreating Nigeria's international image So that, you know, we could probably get visa-free access to a lot of countries that at the moment We're not able to get access to, thank you
Thank you, and we leave, uh, president to be To answer all those questions lined up for him, thank you
Thank you, uh... First question was, uh... Restructuring And particularly, the question was about how do you intend to take on the hegemon Within our political system? And I would say that, uh... There is nothing new about the hegemon To report to you that I have never done before I typically will let you have my background already We used to have military dictators in Nigeria as our major problems There was, uh, Papangida, there was Abacha Uh, then eventually Abusalani And they were probably more powerful than the civilians that we are dealing with now In fact, in my days at the University of Lagos We went to class with Amotan, appointed at the university throughout by university education Uh, but we fought these hegemon Or the demons that were against democracy, and we defeated them It took a while, but we did defeat them and delivered onto Nigeria A democratic era that we are all enjoying and talking about today So, there's no, there's no big deal about this hegemon When the people of Nigeria are tired of them, they will rise up and wipe them out And that is where we are now, in my view I think a lot of Nigerians have reached a point where They are no longer accepting the nonsense that is going on Posted on us by the hegemon you mentioned And we will defeat them this time around again There's a lot of question about how do you intend to sustain the movement? And I would also tell you that This happens to be another level of my activities engagements in Nigeria And I've never stopped I have those escalated from time to time Uh, working with other people, how to fight the system So there was a time, how do we fight the military? It was through the student movement, National Association of Nigerian Students And Pay for Democracy, uh, Committee for Defense of Human Rights The Ghana Power of Peace, Wole Soyinka, uh, Temi Falan We all sat together, fought, went to Some of us went to prison several times Uh, I wouldn't mind, I wouldn't say prison, but I was detained a lot of times About eight different times, expelled from the university twice But, we sustained the struggle After the civilians came to power And I was not in the country I started another thing which was to create a media platform That disrupted Nigerian media space And twelve years later Sahara Reporters became a dominant force Not only in Nigeria as a media outlet, but also on the continent of Africa As a matter of fact, on the world stage We were competing with the likes of CNN, BBC, and Jazir Competed on matters that were related to happenings in Nigeria Uh, so, at this time, I decided that Media is doing very well, but media is not enough to save Nigeria So I write all the stories I want about corruption I eventually discovered that corrupt people in Nigeria start to, even adapt To the way they're turning out stories against them They became unconcerned and, but because there were no consequences Uh, I don't know how many times I've broken stories I cannot tell you how many investigative reports I've done There is no politician in Nigeria today of note That I did not have a report, I haven't done a report on how they stole money Or how they forged certificates Or all kinds of criminal things, but at the point, they don't want that worry about you anymore The only thing that bothered them, I'll tell you Is their children that are schooling abroad They'll call me and say, "See, I don't care about what you're writing, but" My children's, uh, classmates are calling me thief In front of my children And I say, "Oh, guy, you're not a thief" So even the money you used to send your child to school abroad It's stolen money, so let your child also bear the brunt of your weakness But over time, I discovered that the only way to take Nigeria back and to fix the country Is for good people, Nigerians To step in the ring and rescue and take the country from the political class You imagine? That Nigeria got to a point where the senate president of Nigeria is somebody who's supposed to be in prison They had bankrupted a bank, and bankrupted the state Society, General Bank, and far as to that, the Sahara King But he became the senate president of Nigeria Because why? Good people were not running for office And when good people don't run for office, bad people will run for office And win elections So that's what made me to make up my mind And in sustaining this, there's no question about it That's why we moved to a movement first, and then what a political party Our party is less than two most old AIC, the African National Congress It's one of the most popular political parties in Nigeria today as we speak Competing favorably with the PDD That's been around for nineteen years, and the APC that's been around for four years Completely giving them a run for their money, and we don't have money But we've got ideas, because ideas is going to become the new currency of engagement politically In Nigeria So would we sustain this? Definitely, whether we win or not But I'm telling you, this election This election that is coming to us Is the easiest election to win against the old guards in Nigeria Because a lot of Nigerians have come to the final boss stop And they are saying enough is enough And I imagine that we will defeat them, and we'll defeat them round them People are worried about what happened in the shoe states and the equity states, and are using that to judge But as the journalism has covered politics a lot I tell you that whoever wins in equity will lose the national election It happened in 2014, and I'll tell you, it happened in 2015 again But what I don't want us to do is to lose the election From a lifeless person with an android That would be a tragedy that Nigerian can't overcome So those who are saying that they are getting articulated We must ensure that we deactivate all the articulated people So that Nigeria can make progress Nigeria can experience progress, peace, and prosperity Atiku will not make it happen I have told people, Atiku's history Apart from collecting bribes They were the ones that destroyed the official sector of Basundjo When universities were going on strike, a lot of people were in university in, in two thousand and, uh... Three to two thousand and seven There, there was a long strike These guys allowed it to strike the first time Why? They wanted to get license for themselves to create private universities But Basundjo went ahead and created Bell University Atiku went and created, uh, ABTU, whatever they are here So these are the kinds of characters you have running the country So people are even frustrated that Atiku is a shareholder at the Academy of Generators So you can imagine, I can confirm this Someone who is investing in generators You expect the person to give you electricity? You are wasting your time Someone asked a question about participating in the election This DAS Proa vote I would guarantee you that as soon as We're elected and sworn in, it will be one of my priorities In Nigeria, it will be the first thing we can do for Nigeria and Nigerians To allow Nigerians to be DAS Proa to vote Part of it is selfish If Nigerians in DAS Proa were to be voting in this election, I would not be campaigning anymore I would have won the elec- we would have won the election in advance Because that would be six million or more votes in the bag, right there The reason is that most likely, all the DAS Proa will vote for a candidate they can trust Secondly, you cannot bribe them with gari or rice Or branded t-shirt or akara You are wasting your time Thirdly, they will be able to vote and count their vote Because it will be counted, it will be done in a place where eye next cannot influence the outcome of the vote They will count it, they'll take a picture of it, they will put it in They will count it, they'll take a picture of it, they will upload it even before INEC can use the venue of the, of the election. So it will be most transparent and I think it's a legacy we must give to Nigeria, I mean Nigeria, that Nigerians outside of Nigeria, who are really fully invested are allowed to vote and their votes are counted even first before the people at home, uh, will vote. I feel terrible that you guys cannot vote, but I can tell you, you can vote with your telephone this time around. Most of you don't know, people at home do respect us a lot. Even when they don't always like us, in respect, in respect that we do, because we know that we've seen how things are working all over the world and we can't get it wrong in terms of our prescriptions for, uh, making Nigeria a better place. So all people at home and make sure that they vote for your candidate. Like I said, if necessary, apply some sanctions until you do what is right. Because if Nigeria becomes a fantastic country today, you two will spend less on helping people at home. You will not have to worry and feel guilty about every relative you have at home. Because that's the one that kills me, is that I have to be feeling guilty even when I don't have money to give. I'm feeling bad, you know, from, I mean regarding people at home. It's, it's a lot of pressure to support our family back. But guess what? You are the ones supporting, you are the social security department of Nigeria. You are the ones supporting weddings, marriage, you know, education, endowments. Some of you are the ones supplying water to your villages through borehole construction. You are the ones running some of your former schools through, I had to hire three teachers for my former secondary school as of two weeks ago. You know, Odo State, I know Odo State is supposed to be one of the most traditionally advanced states in Nigeria. They are not paid just to teach students, they don't care anymore. So are you doing this a lot for the country? You should be able to have a say in the country and who commands the country. Uh, there's a question about economic plan for Nigeria. I have spoken about this several times. You see, you cannot have an economy first and foremost if you don't have supply of electricity. You are wasting your time. Because if you don't have supply of electricity, you cannot be the production game. Like somebody said, I think it was in Sydney yesterday, that, or was it here? That do you use head cars or some of these cars we need to use, the technology that we need? We need electricity to activate our computers. In Nigeria, there were places we went to and our phones died completely. You have power banks, but after a while the power banks are out of energy, then you don't have electricity. For three days, we were stuck. It's as if you are dropped in an island where there's no electricity, that's how Nigeria is sometimes. So our economy was driven by power, it was driven by the ability to produce and production will also bring about jobs. And when you have jobs, you kickstart a real economy. Nigerian economy as it is today is an economy that is designed for outsiders. Only outsiders come and leave money and leave Nigeria with money. To be honest with you, I hate to have economic conversation about Nigeria, Nigeria doesn't have any economy. The economy we have in the place is a trapped, error economy, you know, or what I call a rub off or rub my back and rub your back economy. And that's why you can never get, you can never get correct or accurate economic figures from Nigerian officials. I think they were sending a video online where they asked the Minister of Planning to explain how much Nigeria is owing, they might not say enough. And you can't blame him, truth is, I don't know. They don't have the figures, they are not putting their hearts together. But what is to change, fundamentally, so that they can take something home? Is the political economy of Nigeria is worth what the restructure, the work of Nigerian person to be focused on empowering Nigeria and Nigerians. And that is what we set out to do immediately. The strategy to get the grassroots in the north, again, I've mentioned it, you are right to say that in the north, they rely on somebody to tell them who to vote for. But we are also seeing that northernans are not as backward as you think. In fact, to be honest with you, what I saw in the north, northernans are the most politically conscious people in Nigeria. There is hardly a northern that doesn't have a PBC. Most southernans, especially the educated southernans, they are only puffing and puffing on Twitter and Facebook, they don't have PBC. In Lucky, Victoria and Aliko, you did a research, over two million people in that place, they don't vote. And then at the end of the election, they are complaining that the Stilungu who chose their government for them. When you don't vote, what do you expect? And Stilungu doesn't campaign to people in Lucky and Okaia, he goes to Alagadu, Adimo Shor, Musi. After they read the election, they come back to there and everybody start to pitch a campaign together with the people. Because they know they don't vote. So if you don't go out to vote, you cannot determine who is going to be your leader. Uh, so the north, the best strategy for the north, as I have told you, is to understand what the north is today. You know, capitalize on the discontent in the north and also look into programs that will make an average natural to feel that they can get out of that poverty. When we worked in the north to campaign, we were surprised that those northern women were asking for schools. They kept asking us for Makaranta, going to the middle of schools in Houser. They understand that if we send their children to school, their children will bring them out of poverty. Right? So, and we were well received in the north. But as I said earlier, the north of the past, where everybody in the north goes in the same direction, don't exist anymore in Nigeria today. Just take that to the fact. Uh, there's a question here about how do we intend to prepare for election loss? In terms of gathering evidence, the vote of tribunal. What I can guarantee is that we have enough people on the ground who will digitally monitor the election, collect information and be able to provide authentic results, which will match with whatever INEC, uh, is going to produce. Those of you who follow Sahar Reporters in two thousand and fifteen, you know for the first time in the history of Nigeria, we are the first to provide the results of that election that was to hurry into office. Before INEC could announce the results, we had already produced results from ten states. Authentically and organically obtained by us through several means. It was because of that the PDP couldn't read the election. And then they had it mapped down with Orum Ebe in the next week, saying I won't take this anymore. Remember that, uh, episode where he went to INEC? So we know how to collect information and evidence, definitely. Uh, but I don't anticipate that we will lose this election. I'm sorry, I don't know how to not feel confident that we will win this election. Our lady there asked about border security and what our immigration policy will be to attract outsiders. Well, we have something that's bigger than what naturally people would think is immigration policy. We have a policy that is outlined, that anybody who can trace their origin back to Nigeria from the diaspora, not Nigerians who left Nigeria now, but even blacks, if you do your DNA and it shows that you are sixty percent in Nigeria, it will make Nigeria a destination to you visa-free. Such that you can come back to Nigeria, invest in Nigeria, feel like at home in Nigeria. And that is the first way to start our immigration policy. The other immigration, I mean foreign immigration policy.